Possibly.
I'm seeing.
Tom, so he is. Okay, cool. I can't see. There he is.
Down one chair.
Recording in progress.
Selectively in one spot.
Not having to go over there too. I didn't know. No, no problem. What big deal? Kristen's coming though, right? As far as we know?
Yeah.
Okay.
If anybody needs blinds, I recommend Bali blinds. They have the best customer service.
Bali, where are they?
They're, I mean, they're, uh, it's a big company and they retail at all kinds of different places. And probably the shady lady has probably.
The shady lady has big prices.
I know, that's why my mom. And I was worried about, well, I can't get a shady lady or whatever. Nope, I can. I can see that school or that curtain's about us. Well, I've had mine for ten, more than ten years and I can't, no. Oh, about the company. I, I called the C about getting them pre-strung because I've talked to them on the board list and. Yeah, they're shipping everything for free. Oh, yes. I didn't even ask for it. I was gonna pay the fifty dollars plus shipping, so I'll understand. That's what I say. It's customer service.
Wish I'd known that ages ago, maybe spot a bunch of clients.
Well, they own, it's, it springs window action or something like that, that only Bali blinds make a couple others, so.
Wait one more minute for.
How's Leah Allen then?
Hey, I think we're ready. So, uh. Oh, good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, as you can see, um, there are four of us here and then our chair is elsewhere but is here via Zoom. So, uh, we've agreed that, uh, I would chair the meeting this evening, but, uh, Aaron, please don't hesitate to tell me what I'm doing wrong, okay? Yes, okay. All right, the first item on our agenda is the roll call. Can we have roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Slade.
Here.
Commissioner Colt.
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yep.
And Commissioner Hickman.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we have two, uh, minutes, sets of minutes for approval, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two and January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, are there any comments, question, changes? Let's start with the first set, which is, um, on, um, uh, the January eighteenth, that the first one in our package is the January eighteenth. Any comments, questions, clarifications on that one? Yeah.
Um, I have one just on the bottom of packet page three, which is page one. Uh, it says that Commissioner Haken observed the ordinance lacks language-limiting reasonable accommodation to primary residence, and in fact, uh, I observed that it has language in the ordinance controlling or containing. So kind of the exact opposite was my sentiment there, and I just want to make sure that got recorded properly, if that makes sense. So perhaps the word lacks being swapped to the word contains.
And I'm sorry, what page was that on again?
Packet page three, the very bottom. Page one of the, uh, of those minutes.
Oh, you're on December, okay.
Sorry, is that not what you said we were starting on?
Uh, I actually was starting on, uh, January eighteenth, but that's okay.
My apologies.
I must have just put them in the wrong order.
Uh, that's, yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
So let me get, get to there for just a second, um.
So I wonder if that was, maybe it was the whereas, is that, is that? Or maybe it was like the purpose and the whereas as you were talking about, was it an argument against having it be the primary residence?
Yeah, my concern initially when I objected or had concerns over the ordinance when it was first brought to us was that it was being limited to the primary and that was, that was my concern, not that it lacked language limiting it to the, the primary residence, that it did limit it to a primary residence.
And I apologize, I skipped right over, um, the December fourteenth, that is the first packet, uh, first, uh, list of, uh, the first minutes in our packet. I'm sorry, I should have. Pay more attention. Any other comments on, let's start with December fourteenth? Okay, anything on the next step, which is January eighteenth?
Wait, it's to be the guy who points out that there's a typo in the phrase Johnson pointed out typo. Uh. Page nine. You, you can. Absolutely.
And then I just had it. Yeah, I, sorry. Right. Um, I had a, a question or commissioner discussion on, uh, page two of the minutes. Um, I thought there was also, I, if I recall, a request to figure out for me or other commissioners down the road, as we're not present, once the emergency order sunsets, the right way for noticing access, that kind of staff, since it's gonna snap back to pre-COVID, that we were gonna reach out to whoever, or that you were gonna reach out, Trevor, to whoever was the right person to kind of get a ruling on that.
Yes, and so right now, under the, I did look at that, right now, under the emergency order, it can all be hybrid and unserved. Under the new legislation, there are only specific reasons that you can be absent. And yes, there does have to be a form in person.
And then just a, a, a further clarification for me, for example, if I am via Zoom in the future, under the new legislation, are there noticing and access requirements in place wherever I'm physically located so that someone could come into, as example, tonight, the fire station? Those, those have gone away with this new legislation.
That went away, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments on the minutes? I, I just had also one, uh, comment, uh, regarding, uh, an issue that was brought up. Uh, this is on packet page number nine, the third paragraph. Uh, paragraph says, it starts out with a, there was a discussion about how to enforce removal of reasonable accommodation, and the last sentence says, she suggested a requirement for a deed restriction for added disclosure. The language was left as is with the suggestion to research the issue further. Um, do we have any further information on that, or is that something you're still working on?
I have not worked on that since the.
Yes. And does it impact the minutes per se? I just wanted to follow up to make sure that, um, if there was still some action to take, that we were still working it. Okay. Anything else saying on any of the minutes?
May I ask you a procedural question?
Absolutely.
Will there be two motions to approve separate sets of minutes? Because I, I tripped stand from one and vote, I guess, in favor of the other. That's, uh.
Uh, I was gonna do it all at once, but we can do two. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
Motion to approve the December fourteenth minute?
Motion, second, second. Okay, we have a motion, second, and further discussion. All favor say aye.
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 Post. Okay. Next, uh, motion is to approve the minutes of January eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, January eighteenth.
Motion, second. Move and second, and further discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Aye.
Motion, Eric, so all sets of minutes are regulated. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We have four items that are here tonight for public hearing, discussion, decision, and action. Any suggestion, corrections, changes, or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, it's next agenda.
Second. Move and second, and further discussion. Hear none, all in favor say aye.
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 Post. The, uh, agenda is approved as stated. Next item on our agenda is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on any subject other than the four agenda items which are on our agenda this evening. Um, we would request that you limit your uh, comments to three minutes unless you request a specific, uh, exception to that. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing or seeing none? Move on then to our next agenda item, item five, which is, as I said, the five agenda items, sorry, four agenda items that are on our agenda for discussion this evening. First one is committee appointments, and Trevor, I'll let you talk all about this.
So there are three committees, advisory committees that have been created by the city council over the last few years. Uh, that includes the STR advisory committee, uh, the trails advisory committee, and the water advisory committee. And all three of those committees, um, have a member of the planning commission appointed to them. Um, and I, let's see, I believe Tom, you are on the trails committee currently, and Aaron, you are currently on the water committee. Diane was the STR committee appointee. Um, so at least that one needs a new appointee. Um, and if Tom and Aaron are interested in continuing on those committees, um, that's, that's certainly, um. So I attached the resolutions, um, so you can see what the purpose of the committees are. Uh, most of the committees meet quarterly about, I would say, um. The STR committee just decided to, to meet only twice a year now, um, things have settled down with the. And then, so the, the planning commission will elect an appointee and then, but the official appointment is made by the city council.
Thank you. Any questions, clarifications, comments from the commissioners?
I see. So go ahead.
No, please, go ahead.
I'm just, uh, seeing in the resolutions that these are typically either two-year terms or staggered two-year terms, are there term issues that we have to consider as we build positions that might significantly break it?
We've had so much turnover on the planning commission that has not been an issue thus far. And I don't think, I don't think either Tom or Aaron have been on their committees for two years.
So if they needed to be on those committees for two years, then is that?
No, because I, I think they, uh, replaced someone else, so they took over a term probably, uh. So we have not actually addressed that issue of trying to stagger them. Because the water advisory committee was a later two, so that was a later appointment.
So with, with, with that in mind, um, for the two commissioners which are currently on committees, how long have you, well, I, I guess I should say, how much longer do you have for, uh, the trails committee? Your, your current assignment to the trails.
Think that I can, another year.
Another year, okay. And Aaron, the same question to you.
Yeah, Tom and I swapped those at about the same time. Um, so yeah, it's about a, a year and a few months, probably. I'm sure we could find the exact date. It wasn't that long ago that we did this.
Okay. So right now, um, uh, we would need, uh, commissioners for a one-year for two committees and a two-year commitment for the third. And then I guess the next question could be, are you two still interested in serving on the current, uh, committees that you're assigned to?
Yeah, I am. I have much to do.
Okay, uh, Tom, just so it's clear, Tom agrees that he will continue on the trails committee. Uh, Aaron, same question to you.
Yeah, very much so. The water advisory committee meets generally, you know, quarterly-ish and as needed, and so, yeah, we've got a meeting coming up, and I would very much like to continue the work we're doing there.
Okay, and so then next question would be is, uh, for the remaining, uh, commissioners as to, uh, of the two-year commitment for the STR advisory committee.
Uh, I'm happy to serve on the STR advisory committee for a two-year term. That's Chris.
Well, it turns out I'm also happy, so, uh. I don't know.
You, whichever you, however you two want to do it.
Um, I'll, I'll let Kristen.
I will do it.
Okay.
I will, uh, yes, accept the nomination to do it, if that's, uh, what's happening.
Yeah, actually, uh, the suggested action is just to recommend new members to the STR because they will be appointed by the city council. So, uh, so then we have an agreement, uh. Chris will serve on the STR committee. Tom is on the trails committee and Aaron is on the water committee.
And, yeah, just a, a question, are we, uh, agreeing then that Tom and I will kind of finish out our terms and then perhaps in about a year would be time to revisit and provide opportunities again? Or are we, in essence, you know what I mean? When I'm asking, where, where are we with that? Just, I'm not opposed to.
I think I should look into that, maybe we might need to get clarification from the city council, because normally, I mean, it would make sense to have it on, you know, election cycle. Um, since that's when new members typically come on, so, um, you know, if you were just taking over someone else's appointment, is it up now? And you need to be reappointed? I doubt, I doubt the city council really needs to do that, um, but maybe in your motion, just include the recommendation for all three, just in case, um, they need to re, redo the memberships.
So you think we need a motion for this?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't think you have that.
Oh, the, I was just referring to the staff recommendation, which is to forward the recommendation to the city council.
And just fill out the recommendations.
That's fine, okay. Do I hear a motion for the current suggested of committee assignments?
Yeah, a motion that, that the three people, well, can I do it if I'm in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. And then a motion that we, we move along and, and Chris being in the STR.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
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 Unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda. T U S D twenty twenty-one dash eleven, review the practices and operations of the digital sign approved under this permit as required as a condition of the project approvals. Yeah.
So, uh, this project was approved last February, and there was a fair amount of public interest for those people who were involved in that. Um, and a lot of people were worried about how bright it was gonna be, how distracting it was gonna be. Um, and so the planning commission included a pair of conditions on that, um, operation of the sign and requested that a operations manual be submitted by the school district and that it should be revisited after six months. So we passed the six-month mark, we're at the year mark now. Um, the operations manual is, is in your packet, um. The conditions also included some consistency with some other documents and information that are submitted as part of those hearings, but included that information as well. And so this is just an opportunity to, you know, uh, discuss how, how it's working and whether any changes can be made for that.
Um, thank you. I apologize, I forgot to ask for public comment on the last agenda item, should have caught that, although I, I will ask, is there any public comment related to, uh, the proposed, uh, commissioners' assignments to committees? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. I apologize for not catching that. Okay, so moving on with this one, thank you, staff. Uh, any questions, clarifications, uh, for staff from commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Um. At this point, I will open this up for public comment. And we do have a representative from the school with us tonight. And, uh, so I'll certainly, if you would like to make some comments.
Just here to answer any questions you have, uh, I haven't, we haven't gotten any comments from the community about the sign. I'm wondering if you guys have any concerns? We found it's been really beneficial to communicate with our families and everything. But I'm just here if you guys have concerns or questions.
Can you pick her up? Would you mind using the microphone?
Do you have any to stand up there?
Thank you. That way we can get it on the record. And, and if you could just introduce yourself, I know who you are, but just, uh, for the record.
My name's Elise Nichols. I'm the superintendent principal at Trinidad School, and if you have any questions or concerns about the sign, I would love to address them.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions?
Uh, just have a comment, um, as a community member who does not have children or isn't really associated with the school, uh. I would say I hardly noticed the sign, which I think is probably the intent, given that it doesn't really pertain or provide information that pertains to me, so I think that's, uh, was pulled off well.
You're in, you're in next school, mate?
I think it's, I guess, I will, I.
Next year.
So next, next year I'll, I'll pay attention.
That's good, I'm glad you heard that. It's not visually interesting.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Uh, I think a series of questions for your action.
Okay.
Um, and the first is, have you received any feedback from students or families or faculty that they wish the sign had more functionality, that they feel like it's underutilized?
Not yet. Um, most people are happy that we can, you know, on basketball game day, we can say, welcome to this team. Uh. We weren't able, Aaron and I had talked about potentially using it to do a, uh, to advertise disaster services, but we've realized that there's no power. We cannot advertise disaster. Uh, but I think as of now, we can adjust the sign data to save the date. And it's, it's really been a beneficial, um, communication tool.
Okay, continue with.
Absolutely, sure.
Um, I guess my second question would be, uh, considering some of the, the public comments through the permitting process, do you feel like there are any concessions that you made that, um, you wish you hadn't made in retrospect? Have you, did you hamstring yourself in any way that you regret?
Potentially the amount of information we can display per day, if we could have some more display, uh, you know, advertising two to three events per day. Right now, we have it static, one image per day. Um, it would be nice, but I also know that instead there would be no flickering between events. But I think if we could have more events on busy weeks, it would be nice to be able to rotate through.
Like, I mean, I would tend to agree with whatever, whatever that is was. I also have my kids there, they think that as a, as a service to your families, this is community, that's probably a more effective way to use an iconic sign. Um, so I've got one more question, which, uh, I promise is not intended to be a gotcha, right? But at the moment, um, I think for most of the day today, the sign is just, uh, the dragon head in the lower left corner, the time of day, in the lower right hand corner, the dates.
Uh.
What percent of the time, just best guess? What percent of the time that the sign's been on has that particular display at this point? As opposed to some specific. You know, just.
It's a very good question. Uh. I think it kind of varies, like right now we're in a spot where there's not a whole lot happening. Uh, but I would say in general, we try and have some sort of event coming up, right? That is a really good question.
I mean, and here's, here's the reason I asked. It occurs to me, as I was watching it today, that was the time in the lower left corner.
Uh.
Couldn't you make the argument that it's actually updating sixty times per hour?
I guess you are technically true.
And, uh, I would say that that is done so subtly and so in intrusive that nobody has ever made that point before.
Right.
Right, so I think my opinion as, uh, as someone who's outside of the process the last time is this, um. But it is possible, I think, because it's done sometimes sixty times per hour to switch to this way in a way that is subtle and intrusive, and if again, you feel like you've been hamstrung in the, in the way that the current permits, you know, allows you to operate the sign, I would, I don't know if this is ethical for me to do or not, but I would certainly invite you to, goodbye or revisit the process in a way that makes that sign the most beneficial to the families in town.
Okay.
Good. I saw from your letter, right, that it's, it's sort of the most important in the mornings, parents dropping off kids, evenings when they're picking them up, raise the evenings, and, um, it seems perfectly reasonable to me if there's been no public concern about it, that, uh, yeah, especially during those times of day, it seems reasonable to, to flash through to a three. I just, I mean, if one of those messages is, is so innocuous as like, don't forget to bring your pencil on Monday, if one kid sees that sign, it's a pencil in the backpack, it was worth displaying. So again, I, I don't know, I don't think it's my role really, uh, I guess for part suggestions, but I'm just saying that, yeah, if you feel like you could needle this or.
I think that could be very beneficial, uh, because there's often times that we want to have a couple messages going, but we have to kind of choose one per day. I know in the permit it said one per hour, but it's, you know, it's not really, if it changes every hour, parents won't see that, so it's just, we just do one per day. And there are, you know, there are definitely programs we can use where, you know, sharing lights when it changes, it spins and moves, and I think that is very visually distracting. But there's definitely ways you could just kind of fade in, fade out.
Fade to black, right?
Yeah.
If that's.
But I know last year people were concerned that as it was right by the school, right by the crosswalk, that it would be a, it would create a distraction.
But it wasn't done yet, right?
Correct.
I think you did a really good job over this time to, to really make it fit in well, and I appreciate that. Um, I was wondering if, I, I realize if the power's out and you can't use it, but is it, is it available for, it's for the community, and if the community is best used by having a few more signs, um, I'm not opposed to that either. But if, say, the city needed to put a sign up, is, are you supposed to have that up?
No, I think they didn't put it in our, I said, handbook, that they could work with the city to give information.
Nice job. Um, I believe there was gonna be some kind of rustic boundary or something that was.
Start working on.
No pressure, it looks good.
It is in process. And we're also, as we took the sign down, we realized that the exterior really needs a fresh coat of paint. And so we are also working, painting the exterior.
Thank you.
Diane's not here. How about the cherry tree?
Spent her twice this year. My wonderful husband gave me a good haircut over Christmas. And then we printed once over the summer.
Other comments?
I did have just one suggestion, um, at least in the interim, perhaps changing it at drop-off versus pickup. That way at least you could capture two different opportunities for messaging, and that would. That way at least you could capture two different opportunities for messaging and that would fall well within, you know, the existing guidelines, uh, and give you the chance to capture folks twice, maybe.
Yeah, and it is.
Small steps.
Yeah, the program is not as user friendly as we were led to believe. So it's one of those, where if we did it on a rotating basis, we would just want to say, you know, change every seven minutes or change every five minutes. It's, we thought it would be much easier to program than it currently is, which is a bummer, but it's not impossible. But we could do, you know, do this one from eight to noon and do this one from noon to six. So.
Uh, just, just a couple of comments. Um, obviously, when we approved this, um, we were pushing against a fair amount of public, uh, comments that, uh, were raised at that time. And it's good to know that you haven't received anything.
I, I don't know if the city has.
Um, it's not been brought up to the commission. So, uh, my guess is that there, if there's been any comments, they've been of a very informal nature.
Okay.
It's the only thing I can say. Um, but, uh, admittedly, I have personally have not heard any, so that's, that's really a good sign. Um, and, and I don't have any problem with, uh, what Commissioner Slay has requested. I think it probably makes sense if you feel that there are some, um, alternate ways in which to utilize the sign. I think it makes some sense for us to maybe take a look at those, um, sometime in the future, if everyone agrees. I mean, I, you know, we can certainly take a look at that. I don't think we're cast in stone at this point. Um, the one thing that, um, however, uh, and, and I, I do take this back. I did get one comment and that was that while it was not a specific requirement, you had, um, when the sign was approved, the, uh, the agreement was that the sign was only going to have black letters. I'm, I'm sorry, a black background with colored text.
Okay.
And I think some people thought that that was just going to be black and white.
Okay.
And, and obviously that's not the case because there's red on there tonight. So, uh, it might, you might want to just, my suggestion personally would be if you could clarify that in your handbook.
Okay.
As to what that meant. I, I don't think there'll be any problem with that, but it's just a matter of just clarifying. The expectation was black and white and certainly the way you read this, it would imply that there could be colors, but just.
Are you, as a planning commission, do you feel like the use of color that we've done so far is appropriate? Or do you feel like it's too much?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
I don't think it's too much. I like what you've done.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's been great.
Okay. So I'll just say it'll have a, a background and text. I think one of the, one of, yeah. So I'm wondering, yeah, I'll figure out how to say that and just have a, a background with simple text. A static background with simple text.
Yeah, uh, I, I think, um, well, I'll leave it up to you to decide how, how best to word it, but, uh, my, my comment is that there was some expectations. They, uh, uh, but they may not have even been correct. But I'm just saying that maybe that we clarify that in your little handbook and I think we'll be in good shape and
Okay.
and certainly I think we can work something out there. Um, any other comments?
I do have one more piece of feedback, which is, um, one of my concerns in general in Trinidad is the lack of access that kids have to playgrounds during, um, you know, business days. There's some sort of agreements, uh, the details of which are unknown to me about, you know, the public being able to access, access the playground.
Uh.
You know, if you're back there, at least occasionally, I guess, when there's no school in session and after school programs aren't going.
Yeah.
So it would be nice. We're looking for a way to, um, improve the effect in which the sign contributes to sort of community service. It would be nice to sort of announce in a very subtle way, uh, the time of day that the school grounds are in use. I guess, I guess that would be.
Can I, so I can, uh, research the history of this a little bit. Uh, there was a point at which the city and the school were kind of jointly paying for the insurance. But now it's the school only carrying the insurance. And so our insurance company has told us that if we announce to the public that it's open, that creates extra liability on our part, whereas if we just leave the gate open, it's just able to be used with a kind of an unspoken understanding. So the school closes at six o'clock. Daycare ends at six and then if we unlock the gates and it's available for use. So I don't know, what were you thinking? Just like playground open?
No, I mean, like it's, I'm sure, I'm honestly like all this information's available someplace, right on the left side or whatever. But just like it's, uh, it's nice to drive by the school and think, oh, like maybe, you know, six, three rolls around, I could take the kids over there or something.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a moot point.
Yeah, and the gate, you know, the gate is, we leave it during COVID, we had it locked because it was COVID. And then now as soon as, basically as soon as the bell rings and kids are getting dismissed, the gates open. And then, but we do ask people who are from the community not to be there just as a safety precaution. But then as soon as six o'clock rolls around, it's still unlocked and begins its unlock.
Understood. And I apologize if that, for, it's on the record, that shouldn't be on the record, but I was just, just curious.
But it is interesting because there is an understanding in the community that it's a community park. But because we no longer have that insurance agreement, we can't call the community park. But I know that, uh, Jack West was looking at the community plan and putting that in. And I had to ask him to take it out with the understanding that it's still available, but it's just not advertised much such.
Just be like, there should be some changes there.
Well, there is, so it's in the existing general plan, um, that it's, um, should be open to the committee.
I think, I, that's a jacket.
Yeah. Um, so I mean, that in the adopted general plan, it was adopted in nineteen seventy six. So it's been, it's been in there.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's also a state, not a state law, but there is a state policy that encourages state grounds to be open to the. How about?
And, yeah, we've fallen a weird thing because we're not technically state. It's, it's some schools do, they lock their playgrounds completely, but we found that people just pop the fence anyway. So we may as well encourage them to check recently.
Yeah, it'd be nice to sort of go what? Power repulse.
Yeah, yeah. And our insurance person just suggested, like, leave the gate open and have that understanding, but don't have it written anywhere that you're a public park after six P M. And we can talk more about that if that's what you guys are watching some of that.
Yeah, I'll have to see what's in the existing general, I mean, in the draft general plan we're working on.
I think in there it was written that you were a park or like.
That it is a recreational facility.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's probably still, like I said, it's been.
Yeah, I realize we're, we're drifting too far from the agenda item at this point, but if indeed that public park, that public recreation area is closed during school hours, that means that there's basically no vacation area of that type in Trinidad, which is one of my big concerns and something I should ask the council to look into.
And with the new funding that's coming available for schools, we have to have thirty extra days of educational services throughout the summer. So that means there's thirty days of school where we're going to have school for our kids who sign up for it, but not for any visiting tourist families. So there are fewer than, even fewer opportunities for them to go on the field on the track.
In winter, there's none, right? Because it's dark, except at school.
Any further questions, comments? Well, thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate your feedback and I think I hear that we certainly would encourage you to take a look at your handbook.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we can take a look at, uh, some changes to make it a better use, useful tool for you and useful for the community as well.
So what would, would you like me to resubmit the handbook in? How would you like that to move forward?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll ask staff, but we have basically completed our requirement, which was to review the handbook.
Okay.
Um, one could argue though, that since we're saying that there could be some changes made, that, uh, you know, that it would come back to us. But I, I don't personally have any real finite schedule that I feel like you need to adhere to unless, Trevor, you have any reason?
Yeah, I mean, maybe for the next school year, might be, uh,
It's reasonable.
And, you know, it might be, when I'm looking, I see, um, I did see a black background and colored text. I think that is pretty clear in there. Um,
do you have any, so I can switch, if you guys are okay with that, I'll just say it's static background with colored text.
And that's, I mean, that's fine with me. And then I think, you know, it says no more than one message per hour. I mean, I think if you guys want to change that timing right now, you could do that. And, you know, whether you wanted to come back to a couple of the, you know, planning commission or whether just something that's kept on by all of the city and if there's any points, maybe revisit it, um.
I would, I would be, oh, let Aaron go.
No, I was just, I'm, I definitely think these are all things we need to consider and work on. I just, Trevor had the procedural question, um, you know, we approved this permit and went through the process. Are we in essence allowed to now change the conditions of approval at this meeting right here? Does that do all the proper notices and that kind of stuff? I just don't want us to get into a situation where we had a procedural goof up down the road. If we wanted to change the timing, for example, that was one of our conditions was once per hour.
Well, I mean, I think you're here now, you can change that condition now. I mean, I didn't notice all the things, but it was, I think this went out in the public newsletter, it was on the agenda.
I mean, isn't that the intention of having this agenda item?
Yeah.
To potentially make changes?
Yeah.
Should they be needed, I guess, as a follow?
Yeah.
So it's just a question of, I, I, I personally would like to see that come, come back as part of a handbook.
Okay.
Rather than do it this evening, only because it's a little, we, we, we can just noodle on a little bit longer. I don't necessarily think that you need to come back.
Okay.
But.
I mean, you don't think it'll be? I just hate for there to be a question or somebody concerned.
We can always handle that, you know.
Okay.
But, uh, uh, just to give everyone an opportunity to see the final version would be appropriate, I think. So, um, I think that will work out.
So I'll change it. It'll say a static background with color text and then the image can change. Think of some adjective that means likely once every five, I don't know, do you guys think five to seven minutes is appropriate or?
How long do you think parents are standing outside on average?
Probably like fifteen minutes.
Every five to seven minutes, then so they could see it.
Okay.
Three messages.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I'm not really speaking for him speaking to the public, huh? But I'm not speaking to the entire public. Well, maybe I should be. Never mind, I'm just, I'm talking.
I think that seems reasonable, a reasonable, um, report.
Okay. Great. I can make this, keep this and then Trevor, I'll just reshare the document to you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
We're here for it. Okay, um, I lost track of whether or not I had opened this up. So I will do that at this point with any comment. Uh, yes, uh, yeah.
I'll save for public comment.
Uh, if there's any, uh, public comment on this agenda item. All right, seeing none.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda is water efficient, water efficient landscaping ordinance discussion decision regarding water efficient landscaping ordinance as required by state law and is directed by housing home and policy. H I dash seventeen. This is a LEAP grant funded task.
So I was originally envisioning this more like the reasonable accommodation ordinance, sort of be kind of simple standalone. I mean, I knew the ordinance wasn't simple, but, uh, in terms of adopting, uh, at least the prescriptive portion of, of the ordinance. Um, but then as I dug into it, uh, it's just seemed to get a little bit more complicated, overlaps with a number of other things. I mean, one of the primary ones being the city doesn't currently regulate landscaping. And so how, how is this going to, I mean, this state law is in effect and the city has to implement it regardless. Um, but how do people even know that landscaping is subject to review? Um, we've never, we've never reviewed landscaping, um, and that would be one reason to get it in our ordinances. But I think, yeah, it's just, it's mixed up in how are we going to start bringing that into our permitting process? Um, you know, we do have some, uh, we do have some funding and a REAP grant to redo all of our application forms. And one of the ideas was to bring, you know, the, the stormwater into it, the landscaping into it, some of these things that are not um, clear at this point into our permitting process and create a frequently asked questions that can be on the website. So that will help. So at this point, it's really, um, an, an informational item for you to start to think about and, and consider. Yeah, I think, I think at a minimum, we need to look at, you know, getting some, some requirements for landscaping plans in our, in our permitting and pursue, review the procedures. Um, you know, as I mentioned, this, this, the, the model well, uh, that the, the state has and it's like, it's not really a model because it is the state law. Um, it's so complicated and, and unless you're following that prescriptive process, you have to have a landscape architect. I mean, you can't, there's no way you can, for someone to do this on their calculations, that whole transpiration, all this, uh, water demand. And that has to be in it. So it's very complicated, but I don't think that we're going to get a lot of projects. You know, that's mostly for commercial type projects with lots of, I'm speaking. I don't think we're going to get those kind of projects anyways. We can stick within that prescriptive. So, you know, one thing to think about is if the city wants to regulate things any differently from the state, so in general, you can be more, it has to be at least as effective as generally as more street. So if you want to look at, um, you know, right now it's rehabilitated landscaping over twenty five hundred square feet. If you want to look at rehabilitated landscaping less than, I did see an example of it. I also saw an ordinance that exempted edible landscaping, um, which I saw in the state ordinance. It's less restricted, but, um, I, I think that was the city of Santa Cruz or the county of Santa Cruz did that. So I, I just provided some examples, sort of, uh, you know, the, the state's page is way out of date. They're supposed to be doing these guidelines and, um, public workshops, and they really have not been doing that. Uh, and I gave you some examples and sort of goes from Chucky was, had this big complicated process. Um, city of St. Helena is kind of the bare minimum, where I just referred to the state ordinance. Um, Pasadena was a little bit middle of the road. Um, Davis, I kind of liked their, their forms. Kind of seemed like a little bit more public friendly, user friendly process. Uh, so there's some examples. Um, also, like I said, water use. Um, so this, this LEAP grant task is, um, not just this landscaping ordinance, but also bringing our use into the permitting procedures. And, you know, that's I've found a lot, surprisingly, I've found a lot of examples of communities that really, at, at least not residential water use. Um, or it's just the, if the size of the meter is, you know, which, and I, so I have a list of questions for the coastal commission for our next meeting on the twenty eighth to ask them all some of these questions about, because increased water use is development of the coastal act. because increased water use is development of the coastal act. So I assume they've you know, the, the town of Mendocino has some pretty strict, um, requirements because they have very limited groundwater supply there. They're, they're opposite of Trinidad, where they're all on wells, but they have sewer system. Um, so, yeah, so I, it's, um, I have been compiling water data for the last ten years, water used data, I kind of pull a look at trends. Um, but, you know, if, if a business all of a sudden increase their water use, I think that's something, you know, affects the septic system, it affects the city's water supply. I think those are things that we should at least be aware of and you know, um, potentially you know, people have to submit a, an application for a new use or a new water hookup. And then there's some sort of contract that if your water use is within this much, you're fine. But if you go over that amount, then so that's kind of what I had in mind. That's what this task was about. So, um, so this is kind of just an introductory. I don't get some questions, comments. We're gonna, we're gonna keep working on it over the next week.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff from the commission?
Um, as, are you aware Humboldt County has adopted such below um, that's part of their ordinances or something like that, especially given that we're providing water to
So the city, um, I know the city of Eureka has some provisions. I think as far as I know, the county would just refer to the state as much as far as I know. Um, that's, that is, you bring up a good point. Um, so I have for a lot of, for the drought contingency plans and the other water things we've been working on, I've used the city of San Cruz as, as a model. Um, and they, they regulate the, the users that are connected to their system that are outside the city are subject to their water. So I think we need to make sure that that's the case, um, for people within the city's water. They're hooked up to the city's water system. So we need to look at that ordinance. So that, I think the city's water ordinance was nineteen seventy-one. It, it, it does have a lot of good stuff in there, you know, and I'm comparing it to other ordinances. But again, I'm sure nineteen seventy-one, there's some things updated. Yeah. So I think, and, you know, people outside the city aren't going to like that, but I, it's the city's water. That's a little very limited.
Sorry, Aaron, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I think my internet's cutting in and out. Um, one, Trevor, I just wanted to say I really, really, really like the flow chart that you adapted from the city of Bello, and I would love to see that kind of format for a lot of like the FAQ section. I know we've talked a lot about that over the short time I've been on the planning commission, just when there's, this is a really easy way for someone to understand what does or doesn't require contact permits, that kind of stuff. So anyway, I just really like that, that you found and adapted. Um, and I just kind of had an overall question. Um, I, I recognize that this is all for landscaping going forward with new projects or, you know, something that falls in the guidelines of, of a project between five hundred and twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, have you seen anywhere, as you've been poking around, funding research, uh, you know, sources for uh, replacement programs for, um, turf going to a seasonal turf product? It's, you know, I have quasi turf collection of weeds, masquerading as a lawn on my property. Um, but it goes dormant. It's not irrigated. And there are a few parcels in town that have irrigated. You know, it, it is their funding basically say, hey, if you switch this to a water efficient turf or replacement or something, I don't know if you've encountered that, because I think that would be something that would dovetail nicely with this ordinance in concept, anyway.
I have seen that in other jurisdictions. I will look into those funding sources.
Yeah, well, uh, going to the, since we were talking about the flow chart, I guess I was initially a little bit confused just by the first question. It sort of sounded like five hundred square feet of new construction. I was thinking like, is that a five hundred square foot building? Or is it, I later sort of figured out it's just the landscaping.
I had that question too on some, some of the ordinances are language wasn't clear. I'm pretty sure it's landscaping.
Uh, well, after I looked at some of the other ones, it seems like it's just the landscaping, but it is a little
Yeah.
unclear. Um, and then and then I was looking at the one from Davis, and it, they made it sound like you only if you were only proposing like an irrigated landscape than you were. Versus if you're like, say like, you know, if you want a landscape, but you're not proposing any sort of irrigation system, then like, do you need, does this apply? I mean, especially around here, where like, you're like barely irrigated unless you're like growing a really nice lawn or vegetables.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I did see that as an exemption in a number of ordinances. If it's not, and I don't know if it's clear exemption in the state ordinance, but I did see it in some other ordinances. If it's not irrigated landscaping, it would be exempt. So I think this is really about water use.
That makes a lot of sense. And then I, I don't really know what like the prescriptive worksheet looks like, but or how intensive that is for the applicant to fill out, but and I guess we've come up with that. But, uh, is there some kind of like processing fee that comes along with that? I assume, how much of a hindrance is this to? Yes.
I don't know what the costs are. The, the, um, Davis did have a prescriptive sheet. Some of these links do have, and it's a one-page form. And then you have to just figure out your areas. You know, there's a requirement to add a certain amount of mulch per square feet. Um, and it's, it's a one-page form that I think a landowner could do. Um, outside of the prescriptive process, it does require.
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of comments. Um, in some ways, um, this really will require some very specific definitions. Um, and I know we always have to worry about that, but in this case, uh, uh, as I started through, the first thing that comes to mind is what does irrigation mean? I mean, if I take a water hose and go out and water my little plant, am I irrigating? And, um, goes to your point, uh, in that, you know, is that part of the system that, that would then drive us to do more like the prescriptive, uh, process, uh, versus nothing at all? You know, I, so it, it, it just smacks of needing some very specific, uh, language. Um, the, the other thing is, um, yeah, I mean, what is rehabilitated landscape? Means, um, if I go out and pull some weeds, is that rehabilitating the landscape? I mean, I realize that this is way in I realize that we are in the weeds when I say this, uh, but, uh, you know, it, and, and we'll get into this in more detail. I don't want to, but it's just like, this just screams of needing some really specific definitions.
And, and the, the state well has a long list of it.
Yeah, I saw some of those. Yeah. Right. Um,
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think the ordinance side would be, you know, it's longer than the city's entire stuff.
Yeah, um, and, and, yeah, I think you're right that there are, most of our projects will be less than the, uh, five hundred square feet, certainly not larger than the twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, but there are some, and one of the examples I was thinking of with the horse pasture. Um, that's in some places irrigated. And, and so, you know, that's where all the, the definitions and specifics get, get kind of, uh, dicey.
Um, and I think there's an exemption for ag.
Uh, is there? I didn't.
At least in some of the ordinance I saw, I saw that there's definitely an exemption for
That would be great.
Ag not, but that land is a zone for ag. So how do you define it?
Yeah, that's So just if it's, so it's clear, the intent in the long term is to incorporate this, uh, wellow into our general plan and incorporate that into some sort of ordinances and requirements for landscaping. So they'll kind of mesh together and at some point will be, uh, uh, compatible with each other.
Yeah. So at the next meeting, I hope to be able to bring back some suggestions for where to, you know, start to add landscaping into zoning ordinance. Um, you know, traditionally landscaping has been more of a you know, landscaping is required under these circumstances. So yeah, it's a I think a little bit of that for parking lots, um, it's um, this goes beyond that in, in terms of residential landscaping and, and, you know, we, we get, you know, new projects and we don't get the landscaping part that goes with it. And I think I mean, both with new issues and water issues, I think it is something that's worth doing. There are some properties that use this, this climate is, you know, certain plants are gonna say soil need a lot of irrigation. So I think it is something that's worth looking at. So, so, yeah, the next meeting, I plan on bringing some, some language back and some suggestions as to where we could start to fit this in. And then the question becomes, how much do we want, does the city want its own ordinance and regulations versus how much do we just oh, landscaping of five hundred to twenty-five hundred feet, see this section of state code? It could be as simple as that. And that's that of the next.
Here. Your hand is up? Are you frozen?
Hang on. Am I back now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. I'll relocate here. Uh, just relative to the comment about the, um, your comment, Richard and Tristan's point as well. I think it's important that we think through uh, down the road, somehow defining whether or not you're tied to city irrigation or city water, municipal water versus catchment or gray water systems or that type of stuff. That'll be a detail we'll want to sort out. I just want to kind of get that out there to put in a parking lot, so to speak.
Good point. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Um, the other, I guess my other thought on this is like, in my mind, twenty-five hundred square feet, really, I mean, I don't really know what, what landscaping is, but twenty-five hundred square feet really isn't that big. And like, anyone in the rural residential with a half acre lot could easily come up with twenty-five hundred square feet of landscaping, which if that means you have to hire a landscape architect to do all these complex and house. I mean, maybe that's one thing if you want to put in a really nice turf field, but I think if you're just trying to have some landscaping that grows without irrigation and whatnot. There's, I mean, I already sort of brought this up, but um, if you're not proposing and a lot of irrigated irrigation in your overall plan, like, I feel like there, there definitely should be some exemption here. I mean, that could be like, like twenty-five hundred square feet is like someone's septic system, you know, of each, you'll have to do something top of that. I hate to have to go through this whole thing just to figure out. Just another thing.
I, I agree. I think we should make sure that, um, I will look at some of these definitions. Um, but yeah, I think if it's not irrigated, or if, even if it has to be irrigated for the first year or two, and then it's not irrigated after that, it shouldn't, shouldn't be part of this.
I think we have to think about what we want to, like, with the, we want people to be storm, rainwater catchment. Then we have to show them how to do it and show them a method that they can then buy into or want for them. And then we try to incentivize that. So I think, I mean, I've been looking for different systems and if anybody has any ideas, I think if we just put something up, others may want it also.
Well, we're working on something, right?
Yeah. So, um, the, the stormwater grant originally included a rainwater catchment demonstration. They took it out. They thought they were going to run out of money. Turns out they ended up with enough money. Um, so they are going to move forward with a I don't know, five to ten thousand gallon rainwater catchment, um, on the, at the school, under the bus, the catchment from the bus roof, bus shed roof to water their garden there at the school. Um, and then the other thing we've talked about, and I mentioned, um, I'm wanting to include in the grant is, so if you're, if a tank is under five thousand, five thousand gallons, it doesn't need engineering. It doesn't need a foundation. Unless you're on a unstable slope or, you know, there are some exceptions to that. Um, and then anything over five thousand square feet or five thousand gallons requires an engineered foundation and secure systems, but we could have some pre-approved plants. So an engineered concrete slab with the earthquake straps or whatever is required. And as long as you have some on all of that, then you're pre-approved. You don't have to go through a process under engine. That would be one thing we've talked about, Julian, that would help.
Yeah, I think it could really define Trinidad, kind of like Mendocino does, that they have to do it. But it could really be a good thing. It could be a good sales pitch for the city of Trinidad.
I agree. And I'm wondering, is that within the scope of a mill?
Rainwater catchment? It could, uh, you know, I think at the, uh, at least as, uh, at least as affected, um, yeah, give shoe groom to, you know, again, you can incentivize it if it's watered by rainwater catchment or or gray water, then it's exempt. And you could do that as a simple, and simple.
Fully in support of something like that. My understanding of the the Trinidad water situation is that there's plenty of supply until there's not, right? There's been a few nice periods where there's not supply.
Exactly. Sure. Yeah.
Uh, okay. Any other comments? Uh, I will open it up for any public comment at this point. And hearing or seeing none. I'll bring it back to the commission and it sounds like we'll see more of this in the future.
Yeah. And if you think of, you know, I, I know this is a lot to look through, um, the ordinance itself as a slog. Um, so as you continue to look at this stuff, feel free to email me questions. Hopefully you have the answers.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, our next agenda item, uh, number four, general plan zoning update, community design discussion decision on an updated draft of the community design element and design criteria. This is completely from our last meeting in January. Uh, you want to just bring us up to speed, Trevor?
Yeah, I don't have much to report. I just, uh, made the changes from, or discussed at the last meeting. I, I took the comments out because most of the comments were for time reference at this point. So now you can see it full size. And, and yeah, there weren't a lot of changes at the last And yeah, there weren't a lot of changes at the last meeting, so. If you're happy with it, we can pass it along to to the city council. And in terms of the guidelines. You know, I have an inquiry into the coastal commission as to how to deal with the private versus public views. I think that's the main. Question we need to answer before we. Try to implement L C D amendment to change these guidelines. And. And it's probably we have a whole series of amendments that we've worked on, so we. It'll have to get in line, but we've also talked about. Potential ways to implement these. I just wants to move on to. About that next.
Questions, comments for staff from commissioners?
Do you have to go through this page by page again?
I I think we can go. I think that would make sense. There's I I have at least one or two comments. I think it would go pretty quick. In general, if there's any. Thing that we want to just ask.
Yeah, except 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 got a quick question, which is. I know this during the joint meeting for planning commission, the council of the S T R, there is. And then there is. Some some interest in revisiting the issue of undergrounding utilities, for example, right? I'm wondering if looking on page four, C two, what six? If we got rid of texts like new or relocated electric communication distribution lines, just like this. You know, preserving and enhancing the borders by undergrounding and the screening. Economic communication just real lines period, right? Would that be in any way supportive? Or would it in any way facilitates the council or whoever else's efforts to get undergrounding completed?
Yes, I think we have to. I think the issue is. You know, in some places I've seen it drive up really pretty expensive and and even difficult to underground some of the lines and geologically unstable areas, for example. So in terms of requiring it, but I think you could add to this policy that says. Whenever funding is available underground.
Let me, Chris, let me make sure I understand where you're referencing. We'll get to it, but.
Packet page forty two, which is page four. That can be itself. And C D two point six. Specifically, imagine it's new or relocated electric communication distribution lines. I'm wondering if there'd be. Any consequence of just removing new or relocated. Essentially, they. Above ground. My city limits. Legal is the right word, but certainly against. Buildings presented here.
Yeah, I and and this is also part of the designer criteria. On page six. And I did have some questions on that, that that paragraph as well. Specifically, I get the fact that when it's the only alternative, they should follow the least visible route, be well-designed, simple and unobtrusive. But I don't know. I don't know how you deal with a minimum of bulk and make use of compatible colors and materials. Somebody's going to paint. Paint poles or paint hardware. It. Just seems to me that's kind of an extraneous requirement.
Which one's that?
It's on page fifty one of the packet.
Yes.
Paragraph I, utilities.
Yeah, I believe that's an existing. That's existing language.
Really?
Yeah.
I want to see all the poles painted. Yeah, okay, we'll get to that. We'll get to that, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never, I mean, never seen a telephone pole like a tree. Like they do with cell covers. So I know that is. I would I would say taking out the habit on bulk and make use of compatible colors and materials is just.
Yeah, I I just didn't see that that made any real sense.
And the new metal ones look pretty stout. But I honestly think we're going to be getting new metal poles that's for fire. I I don't think that's an app around here.
No, if they're going to spend that kind of money, they might as well underground it.
I did have just one clarification in your staff report. About midway through the paragraph there, it says, therefore, one option would be to keep the regulations fairly general and adopt a more detailed policy later. That can be amended more easily because it would not have to go through the coastal commission. Are you referring to story polls there?
Just the story polls.
That's why I was making sure I understood. Okay.
I think that itself, I mean, you do see examples of. Carmel is kind of the classic fifty page design review manual that they have. It's outside the regulations, but I think I think. Yeah, keeping it at this level that we have it at is fine. Have it regulations and then it's more. Yeah, I was thinking the story polls because we were starting to talk about the medding and the flagging and. Getting into those kind of details about. Sample figures and so I think some of those kind of details. You know, we could have a policy or a guidance document that could be a public handout that. Kind of gets more detailed than that does.
Any other general comments, questions before we plow through these two documents?
Well, yeah, just following up with the story poll. Suggestion. I mean, are you sort of thinking like story polls maybe for these specific? Rules, policies regarding story polls doesn't really belong here because it doesn't actually have to do with the design of a. Structure.
No, I think you can have these story poll regulations. I I mean, I think at a minimum, you should say story polls are required. I don't know. And then you can have everything else as guidance. Or I think. You know, having some. Having the regulations as they are, I think is fine. I don't I just don't think I don't know that we need to get any more detailed than they are.
I just want to revisit my question once more because relatively new to all of us. So. Again, that question was sort of addressing. Whether enacting, say, the community's knowledge, for example. If that's the goal, so system development can take place, like, sorry. It was the question was asked, because it has to worry about that. What's that community design element is enacted? Does that, is there any sort of? Retroactive changes that can be compelled, you know, like if we talk about like going back to the example of of underground. Example, if suddenly if you design all that says that. It's so the lines must be underground. Does that compel and actually say the part of teaching here or the city or can? They say, well, that is like twelve and holes predated. This, I mean, design.
Good question. Normally things are grandfathered. So if you, but there are ways to make things retroactive. It's just there are some legal limitations that we have to be careful about how we do that. The other thing we. We try and be careful of is, yes, it would be great to underground all the lines and. And Trinidad Underwood, for example. Very good. But it is usually expensive. So you don't want to commit the city to doing something, you know, it's so we always use words like if. Refunding is available. It's like that. And and so like a policy can certainly say underground existing lines when feasible. Certainly, and that's retroactive, but it's sort of what's the city. And be careful about, you know, committing the city to.
Okay, so shall we just walk through these in our customary manner of one page at a time, starting off with the design? Sorry, the community design element, page one, need. Comments, corrections? Now move pretty fast through it since we've already looked at this several times. So stop me when you feel you want to. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven.
Uh, page seven.
Go ahead.
C D seven point one on the second line. Including maximize use of recycled materials and recycling. Common energy efficiency. Should we just delete the and recycling or is that what is that?
Not sure why that second recycling would be.
Is just a thought, is it because part of lead certification, those types of things necessitate? Having recycling in the building? Could that be what it came from? I know when we built a fire station that got certified, we had to have recycling bins in certain places. They came through and counted them, so to speak.
That's the only thing I can think of, but it.
It's kind of awkward.
It seems, yeah, I'm not sure we can. I'm not sure we want to regulate people's recycling bins. At least not on a residential level.
No, and if they go after lead certification, that'll happen automatically, right?
Automatically. So we can encourage it. But it's awkwardly written anyway, energy efficiency. But energy efficiencies and that choice.
What about just removing and recycling? Does that make it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because this list could go on and on in terms of. Bicycle friendly, you know, and all that kind of stuff, so.
And we could strike the second energy efficiency.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Can we turn to page six for just a second? Sure. When vegetation is mentioned, following up on that, we don't have a session. I'd like to add exemptions for edible plants as well. That's acceptable.
For under which?
Six point one, for example, landscape, shade, light, native drought tolerant. And or edible plants, right? I'd like to introduce. I guess edible, but also not agricultural, like edible, but not.
Yeah, well, there's those food garden. That's still there, the little beauty garden.
So, yeah, the only reason I didn't make a comment there, I I that's that's a good comment, but the program here, again, another program. But it was to adopt a water efficiency landscape standards and or ordinance in accordance with the Department of Water Resources. I thought that that would be the wellow.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So in the wellow would define any exemptions?
Because I think, you know, it does make landscaping shallow. You know, and whether you. If you want, you know, we can add edible landscaping to the list, or you can add it at the end. Edible landscaping is also acceptable. So it's sort of maybe on a lower level. How I, you know, I think either way it would be appropriate.
I mean, I certainly support including it in there.
Yes, this kind of thing appears to several places, right? Native drought tolerant, it's. With adding edible to all of those instances. Um, the other thought I had regarding that same. Phrase. Is whether. There are. There's plenty of native plants that are drought tolerant, right? Every time this living is. It goes to system. Exactly how drought tolerance is defined, right? When I throw a bunch of terminology.
Well, it depends on how you define native and how large an area. That includes, but certainly, I mean, things that are native to the Trinidad area should be able to survive a summer without water. Shouldn't need the definition drought tolerant.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, like scum cabbage, right? It's got to.
So that's what I mean.
There's plenty of plants, like I'm thinking.
What level plant? Sure, yeah.
Is drought is relative, right? Drought here is completely different from drought on the central coast, for example, right? So I mean. Yes, I I'm curious about the validity of that phrase, native drought tolerant plants. But I think, again, there's probably plenty of native plants that are.
Well, I think so, at least native or drought or drought tolerant or edible. And non, you know, so I think those are all separate things in there.
Is that in our glossary?
Edible and drought tolerant, I.
I mean, if there's if there's some if there's some question about the, you know, what what they are, maybe we should add them. I hate to say it, but does it have to be human edible?
I just had a question on that, kind of the concept of vegetable gardens versus landscaping. And.
Fastest way back to the drift, but it's quite a swim.
Just the the, sorry, I got distracted by the quite a swim we were listening to, but, you know, the best, the concept of a vegetable garden. You know, just playing this out, are people going to plant fruit trees in an effort to skirt something? And now we're going to have an abundance of. I don't know, just just kind of thinking that through and. I don't know, is a vegetable garden considered landscaping? I guess kind of is the question that's popping into my brain right now as we're having this discussion. I certainly think they should not be. You know, it's kind of a separate category almost from this.
Yes, I mean, I think, yes, I think an edible garden is part of landscaping now. But if it's not, but. You know, it might be exempt from the wellow. But maybe it's not exempt from design review. So, you know, you can plant a. Cherry tree and irrigate it, but you can't, you still can't plant it so that it'll grow up and block someone's view. So those can be two separate issues.
You could say like edible orbs and bushes, right? I would exclude trees if that was one of the concerns, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you could. But I mean, I think, I mean, you can keep certain trees pretty small.
So I I've lost the thread. Do we have an agreement on what we're going to say here?
I think we're starting to overlap. So I'm going to add edible to this list. And we've already got some policies that say landscaping is not going to block the use. I think that's covering. And what I need to look at is a glossary.
Okay.
Wonder about on page seven. You know, it says that Trinidad's beauty and character and other design policies. And then clear at the bottom, it says to respect the cultural heritage of Trinidad. Shouldn't that be further up or even not in with this other stuff that we kind of want? Or it could be at least this first thing.
Sure, yeah, we could move seven point four to seven point one. We did that with the. Design criteria, we made it. And I think it's in, let's see, it's probably also. Yeah, so it is in one point three A, so we can make seven.
It seems like an afterthought clear at the bottom there.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I think I'll wait for public comment until we go through the procedures, the design review procedures, and then maybe all of them together. Just quite a bit of overlap. So, okay, moving through. Chapter seventeen dot six zero. Any questions, comments on page one?
Um, I had a question on page one. Maybe we've gone over this, but I can't remember the answer, so. Design review. In the context of the new ADU ordinance, would an ADU go through design review?
Good question, uh, it depends, so, uh. So you can carve an ADU out of an existing space, for one, and that wouldn't require a design review. Um, and then there's also, uh. So there's a current exemption for accessory structures less than five square feet and less than fifteen feet in height. Um, and so. There's a similar exemption that we included in the ADU ordinance, at least it's currently written, now it's, it's going to get. Re-revised and come back to you. Um, and I think I made it sixteen feet, because I'm at sixteen. A little bit more standard than fifteen feet. And, and that includes in addition, so you can add on to your house to make an ADU if it's over sixteen feet, though it. Has to go through design review. Now, it's not saying that sixteen feet can't impact people's views, and, you know, that. But I think the exemption is gonna, it, it looks like the exemption is going to primarily be in. Areas that are not appealable, so one of the things I talked to the coastal commission about is a lot of. A lot of things that they allow exemptions for are, they don't allow the exemptions in the areas that are appealable. And there's actually not a lot of true. So it's within, between the first public road and the seed, and I'm, I'm going to see if I can make an argument that that is Underwood, that Underwood doesn't, it's a dead end technically, even though it runs right into that State Park Road. Um. But it seems like the school, that central area, but anyway, it's a three hundred feet from a bluff, hundred feet from a creek, between the sea and the first public road, it's, it's a very narrow. Part of, even up Berry Road, there's some, but there's creeks, so, um. There's very little of Trinidad that is out, outside the appealable area, and so that's the only place those exemptions are going to apply, and then those aren't really few areas that.
Okay, moving on then to, uh, the design review chapter. And we were on page one. There was a question, page two.
Um, yeah, I have another question on page two. Under letter G, under the story poles. I guess I'm just curious, like, do you have some examples? When you as the administrator, Trevor, would find it impractical or unnecessary?
Yeah, if someone were. I don't know, where you fall the porch in the back of their house, maybe. Now, we're also talking about not having designer view for something small. Or an administrative permit process. Um, you know, if, if someone were going to add on to. The entryway to their business. Story poles might interfere with the entryway of the business potentially. Um, no, I mean, I haven't thought that far, um, it seems like it might be a good idea to have. An exemption, but we are going to have an administrative permit process. Maybe that's. Question enough?
Well, if.
I, I don't mind not having to make that.
If we are incorporating wellow into our design review process. I could certainly see where someone is changing their landscape would not require story poles, it was, it could be feasible that we would not need story poles.
For, for low level landscaping.
Right, right, so I, I, I think, I think. You know, it, it might be kind of a very general statement, but I think there may be some situations where we. We would need this. Yeah.
And really, you know, I think it's, it would be something that, um, and, and. You know, maybe we can add some language here for planning commission can request, so, you know, like it is right now, story poles aren't a requirement, but I tell people. Planning commission is not going to approve your project unless you put story poles on first. So it could be something like that, where I say, well, I don't think you need story poles, but it's at your own risk, the planning commission might request.
Yeah, I guess I'd sort of ask that, because. I've been thinking of story poles in the context of coastal views, like. And like, if there aren't coastal views at stake, obviously, like in my neighborhood. Is that something that's still? Yes. But that would, like, does the planning commission, I guess I'll put it to the planning commission, does the planning commission feel like that is still something we want? When coastal views aren't at stake, I mean, that's what has always been contentious in the city of Trinidad, is when there are coastal views at stake, but. Someone wants to build a house or something, but they're just blocking. Just like your neighbor's house, you know, it's, that, do we need to have story poles for that?
I think the other instance, the other primary instance would be the bulk, so. Yes, a house, you know, across the freeway or wherever on scenic might not have the potential to block people's views, but it might present just this bulky thing from the. That would be the other. Or, you know, sunlight, I think is also, uh. You know, how a neighbor might, might not know how it would affect their sunlight, or of course that changes the seasons, so.
What's an error?
Yeah, just, I was just going to kind of weigh in, and then I had something on G as well, but I would say story poles, I, I, I hear your point, Tristan, but I think there's also. A need sometimes with residential for kind of to. Trevor's point about the bulk and that kind of stuff, because it's not just the coastal views, I have no coastal views for my property either. But I could see somebody building something adjacent to me or changing the profile of the bulk that I would, you know, that, I would find that helpful. Um, but then, and also under G, Trevor, uh, my question on this that I had was. In, in this circumstance where you would waive or modify the requirements, would that naturally be in your. Uh, staff report, one I would hope that it would, and I don't know if we want to kind of capture that in writing, so that way someday when there's not Trevor. And we've got a new city planner, you know, hey, if these are modified, it will be part of the staff report. And then. I, I didn't know if it would make sense to somehow pre-notice, or if we could even legally do it, pre-notice a planning commission, hey, this one's going to come before you, I've waived it because of this. That way the applicant doesn't go through the headache of coming before us, and then simply term and saying. Neat, we'd like you to come back again and show us it with story poles, I, I, and again, I don't know, we could even do that legally, those are kind of my two thoughts.
I, I mean, I don't see, you know, if this. So I'm, I'm going to add some language, the planning commission can still request story poles, and. I guess you wouldn't know until the staff report comes out. Have to think about that, I guess. Well, hold on, over, how about my work? It could be something that's included in the public notice. Story poles will be placed or aren't placed. Could be part of the public notice, I don't know that that needs to be in the regulations, but. We could add that to our public notice and then. To carry on forward.
Okay, okay, so there may be still some work we need to do on this paragraph. I think I'm hearing right.
But I'm going to add that the plant, um, some language the planning commission can still request it if it's waived, I think we can figure out the exact procedural details outside the regulations.
Okay. Anything else on page two? Page three? Page four?
Um. Under architectural styles and features, number seven. I think you were. There's solar panels that comply with, I think we were, you were going to research something.
Yeah, so that's my note that, uh. It's basically the Solar Rights Act, um, but we, that's another thing we need to incorporate into our. Regulations, but I think, I think for the most part, we can't require designer review for solar panels, um. So, yeah, so that's one of the notes that I erased from this, so that is to look at that.
Also under D, uh, two for preset architectural styles, um, this is the second time a standard test for restaurant designs has appeared, and I'm wondering if there is. Perhaps a more, uh, relevant example we might include here, like, you know.
Just franchise, maybe.
Should it apply to residential homes as well? In this instance, or no? Like, is it, is it serving to, like, prevent. Generation of like a mission style track home type.
I mean. No, I don't think that's the idea, I think the idea is, you know, actually to keep. Chevron station. If, you know, that was a missed opportunity, the city was desperate to get a gas station back. When, there was a gas station there, it left. You know, we're not, we're not going to make you do something you make. So, we'll just let you do your franchise. Uh, so, yeah, so I think it's really just sort of that franchise, same old franchise, so. Think the track home would come out in the, up there. Yeah, I remember the. The place someone bought the, or wanted to buy the place next to the bed and breakfast, and they came out with this, like. Puff, I mean, it, like these great columns, and, oh, it was, but that was their dream, and that's. Luckily, they didn't end up finding it. It's not, but it's.
So that's, I've got another thought, a question that may or may not be applicable, but. I think in other parts of California, like modular ADUs are becoming popular. If users pre-communicated, dropped in backyards, I'm wondering if. That would apply here as well, like would this preclude the placement of modular ADUs? Except the insurance.
Or a bar to their home, yeah.
Well, that's a good point. I think, I mean, I think. Modular. Nice, especially if they have architectural features added.
What about preset commercial architectural styles?
But they probably still bought that design, um.
Because, you know, the, the unique home styles is kind of covered under D one, I feel. And two is kind of more for commercial, I feel.
Maybe it's commercial franchise designs will be avoided. Just leave it, you know. That cover it?
Yeah, that's, I was just sort of curious about the intent of that.
Again, that's actually another one that's existing. Um, some legacy language there, that, yeah. Like in seventy six. So let's see, so commercial franchise.
Okay, um. I think I have some page, uh, fourth. Page five. Page six.
Sorry, I think I was actually kind of waiting for Eric to say something, but I know that we've been troubled by that. That two thousand square foot regulation that obviously goes.
Page, page five?
I am on page five, yeah, E one A. We, we had some questions previously about whether that was arbitrary. I guess my opinion is that I would rather have. Like a pragmatic or practical square foot regulation actually gets. You know, observed rather than some arbitrary square footage or something like that. Yes, that's true. And so I'm just, I'm just wondering whether that two thousand square foot, the bit is appropriate in terms of. What goes on. It's like, I'd really like to see, like, you know, a histogram, or I'd like to see, you know, what percentage of, of homes in town are actually at or below or above. Two thousand square feet, and I'd also see, you know, some of those other sort of.
I, I have actually put some of that information together for past projects, um, it's not citywide, but neighborhood, um, I actually recently did some for Underwood. Um, and it, it varies a lot.
So, I, I, I guess I'm still a little confused, um, this. You know, they, they shall be considered out of scale with the community. Uh, unless they are designed in such a way, in such a way that their bulk is not obtrusive, and the building is consistent with other design standards, are, are you asking to. Crisp up the, the requirement for two thousand square feet or adjust it? I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I think, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, we've sort of discussed this in the past, and, um. Like thinking about the Vandickle project, for example, which would have brought in two thousand square feet. Travis, yeah, we've sort of overlooked that particular element, and focused instead on the. On these other ratios, right, so I'm just wondering, like. Would we should have this toothless square foot limit, or whether it might be worth our while to actually have an enforceable. Or applicable and rational square foot. Two thousand, I think I asked last meeting, like where that two thousand value came from, said, oh, seventies or something, right, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I think it's, I mean, it's, it's worked okay for Trinidad, I was going to be, one option could be, you know. Two thousand square feet shall be considered out of scale of the community, blah, 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 but in no case will it exceed twenty five percent. Or ten percent. That might be a compromise, to put a hard, hard limit on.
Am I missing something, or isn't that already in there? It's two thousand square feet and or a floory ratio, but that already is a hard limit. Of the twenty five percent.
So the, the ratio is, is not in the existing. Guidelines or regulations, we, we use that because two thousand square feet on an eight thousand square foot lot is twenty five percent, so we, we use that as a guideline, so that. Larger houses on larger lots are appropriate, smaller houses on smaller lots are appropriate, so we kind of use that. So, maybe two thousand, so I was saying, maybe that could be the hard limit. But then that means. That means on a smaller lot, you're, you're putting a hard limit less than two thousand square.
That'd be appropriate, right?
Be appropriate.
I just. I mean, I. I was just going to say, I, I feel like what we have here. I, I agree, I have a margin note here, just that we need to kind of suss it out in the future. Um, you know, this issue has come up a couple of times, but I personally, speaking for me, I feel like that what we have in place. Works reasonably well, I agree, it's not, uh, definitive by any, by any measure, but, I mean, I can think of a project that. As a commissioner, I've approved that was over the two thousand, uh, that was out of, you know. Be, because it was designed in such a way, and I can also think of one specifically where that was one of the findings that. Made me not want to approve the project in a combination with other findings, so. Um, I, I don't know, personally speaking, I feel like the language here works for now, I, I would be interested in. You know, some data analysis to see what, what, you know, what, what would it look like average square foot, you know, for the average lot size in Trinidad, we don't have a whole lot of parcels, it would just be some time for someone to go through and do that, and. Do some simple math that a spreadsheet could do, uh, once the data was entered, um. I don't know, so I guess I'm comfortable with it as it is. With kind of the, the parking lot notion to, it, it, it needs maybe some more work down the road, but there's also not a whole lot of opportunities, I think, for. This to be that big an issue, um. Necessarily.
So where do we want to go with this? Um. Do you want to, as you pointed out, just put it in the parking lot for the time being? Uh, I've, I, I have looked at this any number of times, and I, I'm happy, but I, I can understand where people might be concerned. Um, I, I, I think what we've tried to do is to provide as much flexibility as possible. I, I, I think what we've tried to do is to provide as much flexibility as possible at the same time, still stay within the boundary of some design, you know, criteria that makes some sense. Much pleasure.
Uh, I mean, I think I'm satisfied with the way it's written as well. I think it's a good goal, but I, I'd like to leave some discretion there. I mean, we talked about this last meeting and I've thought about it since then. And I like that there is some discretion for bringing a project that does concrete. So I'm good with that.
Yeah, I feel like talking about it many times.
The, the, the other thing we can do is when we make a recommendation to present this to the city council, we can say that maybe an area that you want to take a look at yourself and, you know, provide this is where we think it should be, but at the same time, if the city council feels strongly in one way or the other, then we can take that under consideration as well.
Yeah, I don't have opposition to it per se. I think it was just sort of in search of the rationale for that particular value. And, and it just seems a bit arbitrary, but again, it also.
Yeah.
You gotta choose some number, right?
Understand. Well, if, uh, if you think about it and you come up with some other numbers that make some sense, you know, we can, we can certainly entertain it. Yeah.
Yeah, I do have some, some of that data and I could just shoot an email to you guys and see.
I am, yeah, at risk of slowing the whole process down by just tasking the city council to, to look at that specific value.
I'll still send you the data at the city council level. You can maybe make some more suggestions.
Okay. Anything else on page five? Page six.
Paragraph I, I think we've already discussed as part of the ordinance, so those similar changes that we will make, I assume. Page seven.
Yeah, page seven. L two. Of the screening of various things. I, I definitely want to remove outdoor storage of materials from that. I don't know. I don't, I guess I don't see as outdoor storage of materials as a design feature. For one. And I guess I don't, my personal opinion, I don't really want to require screening for paint tanks. I think of them as just a feature of our town and trying to hide, I mean, everyone has and trying to hide it. Seems unnecessary. I get people want to do it, obviously. And I don't think dumpsters counts as people's trash cans. But maybe a little hesitant why the screening of those two. If there's any other opinions on that. I guess my, sort of my, my mindset when I thought, when I read that this time and thought of it, I, it just, it makes it sound like we're trying to hide the fact that like people live here and they have stuff in their yard and they have their propane tank, trash cans and like, that's just like life and I don't necessarily need to like turn it, try to push this thing that like, oh, to hide all that shit.
Yeah, I think in the current general plan, you know, storage of crab pots is specifically protected. Allowed to use. Um, I, you know, I think this is primarily geared towards commercial uses, so the commercial storage of materials. And, and commercial dumpsters. If, if you want to add that.
You want to make it convert, like add this commercial in front of all of that stuff, I guess.
Could be. I mean, I would say for propane tanks. I would, before you remove, because that's been a requirement for a long time. And I think if, if everybody all of a sudden removes their propane tank screen, you might go. I don't know. I don't know. But they're all, they're almost all screened in town. And so you don't notice them. So you don't think that they are intrusive. But if you could see them while you might, I don't know. I, I would think on that maybe a little bit more, because that has, I mean, that's just because it's been it, it's been what Trinidad's done. So I would, you know, think about it before removing that. But I think for commercial, I'm not against it. I'm not saying you shouldn't remove it. I'm just saying that I think you should think about it is all. And, but I think for everything else, we can definitely have that just.
Duplex project over here, a couple of blocks over, the, that, that propane tank would be the only thing you'd see. Like it, it sits right there in the middle of everything. They built a fence around.
Well, you see it anyways.
Yeah, but it flows now with the fence and you go past it and look at the house a little bit. But it just would stick out like a sore thumb. Which is adds to character. Yeah, it becomes an old, it's fishing village and why not have a boat and an old propane tank sitting out in front of your yard? I don't, I think they did a good job of covering it.
Yeah, the first thing that comes to mind is, and I don't know who have covered somewhere, maybe, maybe we haven't. It's, it's covered under nuisance abatement. Uh, where someone is storing a whole bunch of stuff in their front yard or whatever.
Yes, there are.
I realize that's not exactly.
And so that, and that's why it's a, that's, that's why that's really commercial is because a residence, you're not going to expect outdoor storage of so it would be permanent screening for you know, uh, you know, there's that woodlot behind Arby's for a while and I thought was official permitted use. They have to screen there. But for residences, yes, there are some provisions for outdoor storage of like vehicles and equipment. That is not allowed in front yards.
Okay. So what we're suggesting then is making this for commercial.
Yes, except potentially propane tanks.
Yeah, I, I kind of my personal feeling we would screen propane tanks better off.
That's just.
It can be, it can be pretty simple.
Yeah, no, I know.
And there was one on Edwards not too long ago where they moved it to their front yard and it just was pretty wide open before they put the little fence around it.
Yeah, the, the, the key here, I think, is visible from a public roadway or trail. And if you can convince people that it's not visible from trail or road and
Yeah, well, yeah, add the, the commercial part to the first. Those first things, thank you.
Anything else on page seven?
I just had a question kind of on the same topic. For Trevor, maybe if someone has a, a home business that has storage of materials. Where does that, is that regulated differently? And I appreciate and completely understand and love the crab pot exemption, obviously. You know, it becomes what's in a, you, you know, that one's exempted, but why if I, you know, the first one that jumped to my mind is a pool cleaning business, but that's of course hazardous material storage. That's regulated differently, but I, I, I don't know, you know, and, and I, I don't know how I feel about that. I was just curious, is that covered elsewhere that you can think of?
So there are provisions, I believe, in the home occupation regulations that says now no outdoor storage of equipment for home occupations. So if you're running a business out of your home, can't store the equipment outside.
So not, not to nitpick this, but let's say that the horse pasture stores. Hey. Outside. It's a tar. Would, would you require them to screen?
Well, so this is part of the design review. So it would have to be associated with some sort of development that needs approval. So I think hey, would fall under that for this permission.
No, but, but yeah, I'm, I'm way off track. Thank you. Yeah, got it.
Yeah, I get, I mean, but the outdoor storage of materials really is that really part of the design? I guess it is.
For commercial, yeah, for commercial business, we can see that.
Anything else on this issue? Anything else on page seven? AJ.
Under N two, I'm just suggesting something about edible plants once again.
I'm sorry, under what?
Uh, N two.
Well, actually, yeah, that, plus, isn't this whole section going to have to be changed? Well.
Necessarily. Because this is really more the design review, where that is for, you know, irrigation systems and species of plants and making sure the soil is amended and things like that. And that you can't, you know, you can only have a certain, you know, limits the area of high water use plants like lawns to a certain percentage of the landscaping.
Anything else on page eight?
Um, yeah, at the top, number five. Regarding retaining walls. I just the requirement for them to be science serviced, all those different things. I guess I I want to add something in there for like only somehow, it's like only if they're visible from a public street. But if it's like retaining wall behind your house, like who cares?
Yeah, I, I think that's the intent. And it does say should.
Okay.
But it could be retaining walls visible from public streets and trails, like the other ones.
Anything else on page eight? Page nine. Okay, very good.
So at this point, I will open it up for public comment on this last agenda item. Are there any comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Bring it back to the commission. So at this point, this, this is just me speaking, I guess, but at this point, I think we've gone through this pretty thoroughly. There are a couple of issues which we've discussed this evening. But I would be comfortable, I think, to recommend that we present it to the city council and let them take their but then have an opportunity to review it and also to have them consider some of the questions that we've raised this evening. Reasonable to everyone. Okay, uh, could I hear a motion?
Yeah, I mostly accepted as, as we spoke this evening. Beautiful. Send it to the city council.
Okay, go here a second.
Second.
Okay. Move second and further discussion.
Just to clarify, so I mean, a lot of issues and questions have come up and so I just want to make sure I capture the ones you want the council to specifically look at. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions of various things, how, how structure size is definitely one one of the important things that
Yes, and, and, and when I, when I say we're willing to send it on, I mean, with the, the changes that we have discussed and agreed to this evening. So I think the main one is building E, sorry, E one A. Unless anybody else has any other ones that they would like. I mean, we've made some changes like adding edible. Uh, you know, that sort of stuff, but I'm, I'm happy with.
I think we're going to change it as much as we change it tonight every time we look at it.
Yeah, there's always something.
There is a phrase about that, but I will say. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you say aye.
Aye, aye.
Post. Motion carries. So our recommendation is that we're, we'd like to hear it with the council.
Okay, relations.
Pardon me?
That was big.
That is a big one. Yes, I.
It took us a while.
I suspect we'll see it again, but we'll see.
Okay. Next item on our agenda are commissioners' reports. Do, do any of the commissioners have any items that they'd like to report on?
Just briefly upcoming, we do have a water advisory committee meeting in a couple of days. So if there's anything that you want me to look into, please ask. And I did want to share that I had the opportunity to take a water treatment plant tour and it was incredibly educational to be there with Phil, his last name escapes me, the current operator from Coleman Engineering and get, and hear his input and suggestions on where the city should be pursuing additional water storage. And I definitely am going to make sure that that is connected back to the city council as they continue with their process with GHD and other folks. There's, I think, an opportunity to put a tank in the wrong place if we're not careful and create some problems for the city in the future. So. So.
Yeah, good to know.
Yeah, and we have a trails committee next Tuesday. It was going to be Valentine's Day and it got bumped. But any input is very much appreciated and you're all welcome or whatever. And or if you have anything, email me, whatever.
Thank you.
More next time.
Anything else?
I'll just mention real quickly, just as a reminder to all of us that served last year, our Form seven hundreds are due. I think April first or first.
Maybe you can check on that.
Well, I mean, we all received an email. I just forget it. Our email's not out, but just a reminder that for, Form seven hundreds have to be filled out and submitted. And it can be electronically. Anything else? Uh, staff report.
I think I need a report. I'm just tuning on the same priorities that we talked about. Super meeting and then the joint. Yeah, so we will continue and I'm going to continue to work with the coastal commission to come up with a plan of action as getting these amendments through, through their certification process and strategizing how to do that as well as I sent them all the general plan elements so far again to comment. So yeah, so we're just going to continue working on these same things. So you'll see more landscaping and water related stuff coming forward. Working on the eighty four, once again, coming up.
Are you pleased with the meetings with coastal commission?
We only had two and
It's a random question.
For the most part, I think they've been productive. What I was sort of realizing now is I'm not not necessarily getting the follow through. So, you know, there was a list of action items for them that they were going to follow up and get the answers. And maybe they just assumed they'd give me the answers at the next meeting. I was hoping to get them sooner so I could get working. I assume I'll get them at the next meeting. So we'll, I guess we'll see. Otherwise I might see if I can keep those. working. I assume I'll get them at the next meeting, so we'll, I guess we'll see, otherwise I might see if I can keep those moving along. Yeah, they did just have their meeting, um, they passed the 184 minutes, Campbell County, so I'm going to take a look at that, um, and then the lighthouse, so they
Yes.
Then they were, they were all off. I think it will be hopeful, but yeah.
Great. And next item, uh, is, uh, future agenda items and this is the same list that we've been covering for some time. Any changes or additions, deletions?
Uh, again, being relatively new to this, I certainly found every agenda I've seen, or they've appeared as future agenda items on every agenda I've seen, I'm just sort of curious if there's a non-time line, uh, which piece will be addressed. Now you've got all of these priorities.
Yes, and I, I think it's a problem right now is that, uh, yeah, there's other more pressing priorities like grant, you know, getting the, the grant funding, but we don't want to forget about them. We don't want them to drop off the weight. Um, I am, some of these, I'm, you know, we're kind of working on the, with the stormwater grant, we're working on rainwater catchment um, for, uh, I'm, I'm working on a cultural resource development, um, that will incorporate some of the management plan into the general plan. Um, I sent off a a draft of that to the tribes and, uh, they said they'll be looking at it and get comments back. Actually, I have a meeting with the rancheria next month to talk about that, um, although I, I left management plan policies out for now, then maybe there's mediation coming up during management team, and so we're waiting for that layout, because it transfers the land of this. So in the background, I'm working on some of these vegetation regulations. We are, I mean, it's not the use of vegetation ordinance, but we're going to be working on landscaping. Signage. Well, design review, that's a signage issue too, so we are, we are working.
Okay, any other final comments? All right, otherwise we are adjourned, thank you.